It's 5:30 PM. I would like to call our work session to order. Mr. Parker, could you please call the role?
Ms. Daniels. Ms. Davis.
Present.
Ms. Green.
Present.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Rawls.
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez.
He's here, his stuff is, but I don't know where he is. I don't know.
And Ms. Hill.
Present, thank you. Not sure where Councilman Rodriguez went, but we will begin this evening with committee business from the Administration Committee. This evening, we have four resolutions for discussion. So, we will begin with Resolution 29 of 2025. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. A resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the United States Department of Transportation Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant Program for up to $5 million for funds to improve safety and accessibility along Division Street.
Thank you. I see Mr. Siders is here on behalf of the Administration and Ms. Walmer. Good evening, if you guys wouldn't mind providing an overview of Resolution 29 of 2025, please?
Sure, so, this is a grant opportunity as provided by the US Department of Transportation, Safe Streets for All. We are currently in the middle of doing some preliminary design on Division Street, but we have yet to determine the funding for construction, and we thought that this would, this grant would be a good opportunity to fund the construction of Division Street.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Walmer, would you like to add anything before I open the floor up to my colleagues who may have questions?
Sure, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to read stuff because I know that's irritating. So, we've been trying to complete the-
Excuse me one second, can you please move the microphone closer to you? Thank you.
We've been trying to complete the Vision Zero Safe Streets for All program, and this is part of that. So, the objectives are to enhance safety and accessibility, especially like traffic calming measures, pedestrian crosslights, ADA compliance sidewalks, that's a big one. And then, the multimodal aspect is always a big thing with bicycles and just people walking, you know, just to have safe places to walk, safe havens to stop when they're in the middle of, I know this when I walk to work every morning, like, it's really, really nice to have a little safe section on Front Street or Forester when I'm crossing. And, we're hoping that the effect of all of this will help to reinvigorate businesses along Division Street. And, this is all, has been part of this, the Vision Zero process for a long time. The Safe Streets for All program is great, and we're trying to jump on it. It does require a 20% match, which we think we have with the liquid fuels and a little kick in from the General Fund. And we're trying to kind of get these funds nailed down in our pockets before other things happen at the federal level, and this is federal money, this is USDOT. So, the match cannot be federal funding, it has to be here, like, personal. We think we can do it with liquid fuels and some General Fund money, but it, you know, it's one of those things that's just not, that's not complicated, I'm sorry, not uncomplicated, it's actually quite complicated. But, we have the services of Walz Montgomery, having created the narrative and the cost estimate, and we feel pretty confident that they know what they're doing, and they know how to manage this project, so that's what we have.
Thank you. Just wanted to note, I see under the strategic planning and implementation that the estimated cost for the Division Street improvements is approximately $6.5 million. Is that correct? And the city is currently in the planning and public engagement phase, so we can look forward to public engagement meetings or town halls in the future?
Yes, that's correct, we had a public meeting on May 8th at Italian Lake, and we had a pretty sizable turnout. We also have our survey for the Division Street improvements running until June 9th. We also have the display boards on the atrium if anyone wants to stop out and take a look and give us their opinion. Once the survey is complete, we'll compile the data and work with the Administration to come forward with kind of the proposed alternative that we want to proceed with, and at that point, we'll hold another public meeting to kind of showcase what the results of the public survey were.
And just one more question, how can people access the public survey if they haven't had an opportunity to complete it yet?
There is a link on the city's website, as well as a QR code that you can scan in the atrium of this building, the MLK Building.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions, I'll open the floor to my colleagues who may have some additional questions. I'd like to begin with our Public Works Committee Chair, Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President, I've actually had a opportunity to speak with our engineer, Mr. Joel, so I have no questions on this, thank you.
You're welcome. Councilman Jones, any questions?
Thank you, President Hill, no questions at this time.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rawls, any questions?
Thank you, President Hill, good evening to you both, thank you for being here tonight to explain and give more clarification on this project. I just had one question. While this project is getting done, is there any, I don't want to say thought process, but is there any, anything in the works of maybe putting cameras up for speeding? I know we're doing this as a way for safety, but I also know a lot of cars do drive very fast down that road, I don't know how much this will stop them, but I know currently that is one of the high places, that and where it crosses that second, that where cars do go through that light. So, are we putting anything up there to enforce speeding even at, while the road is getting safely precaution?
Yes, we are looking into interim measures to calm traffic until construction can begin, this is going to be maybe temporary bump outs at the corner, corners, just anything we can do to get people slowed down until we can implement our permanent solution.
Okay, thank you, that was all I had.
Thank you. Vice President Green, any questions?
Thank you very much, thank you both for being here tonight, I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davis, any questions?
Thank you very much, good evening, thank you for being here, no questions, just a couple of comments in reference to the school zone that's right there at 6th and Division, we have, I think it's Cam Curtain, I just think it's important that this project move forward because we need to reduce the speed in that area and also ensure that our students are safe when they're going to school and coming out. Between the months of August and May or June, they're in school, so I think that the improved crossings, the lighting, any cameras, or anything that we can do to slow the speed down so that our pedestrians are safe, that includes the children also there, so thank you for being here again.
Thank you. Councilwoman Daniels, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. If there are no further questions, thank you for your participation. I move to add Resolution 29 of 2025 to our next legislative session agenda for a formal vote. Next, we have Resolution 30 of 2025. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution 30 of 2025. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a reimbursement agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to facilitate the purchase and installation of certain waterway enhancements to better serve the health and safety needs of boaters.
Thank you. Good evening, Chief Enderline, if you wouldn't mind providing an overview of Resolution 30 of 2025, please?
Sure, good evening. Resolution 30 of 2025 actually piggybacks on Resolution 76 of 2024 that council passed back in November. So, this, that original agreement was to allow us to enter into a, an agreement, intergovernmental agreement with the Pennsylvania Fish and Boat Commission, a PENDOT. This now is actually the funding mechanism, how PENDOT will pay us back up to and including $2 million for those waterway improvements at the Dock Street Dam. And they are, they have to install buoys at the dam for their project at both the 83 Bridge, as well as the Market Street Bridge, and we wanted to try and speed that up and get that done because we have an interest in also protecting the dam.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any questions, I'll open the floor to my colleagues who may have some questions for you. I'll begin with our Public Safety Committee Chair, Councilwoman Jones, any questions?
Thank you, just for clarification, so, they won't put the buoys in until the 83 project, or you're trying to speed that up, if that's what I heard?
Correct, so, we, just Saturday, we installed the buoys at the dam, so it's an annual thing that we have to do, these buoys would be permanently attached to the bedrock in the river so that we don't have to go out there every year and replace them. They'll also be bigger and more visible than what the regulation buoys that are called out in the state's guidance, so they'll be big, they'll be bold, and you'll see them without any issues.
Yeah, I can remember that resolution we did discussing it, so, the only other question I have is, how safe would these be, would it make it much safer, obviously, maybe?
You know, one of the things that we're looking at and the challenge, one of the challenges with the river here in Harrisburg, it's nearly a mile wide. If you are in a kayak, in a canoe, or lose power to your boat, you gotta be a pretty strong willing person to overcome that current and the wind, once you lose that power, and being a mile wide, it means you gotta paddle at least a half mile to get to the other shore, right? And, one of the things that we believe is that these will be big enough that you'll be able to actually grab onto, and if you're in trouble.
Yeah, thank you, that was just more for, you know, for our public that's listening, you know, hopefully everybody takes heed, I know the river is beautiful, but it can be very dangerous at times, and we just want to make sure we're doing what we can to keep everybody safe, so, no further questions, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez, any questions?
Thank you, Madam President, Chief, always a pleasure, always good, great seeing you and hearing of all the good work you and the team are doing in the city, thank you, and surrounding areas.
Appreciate that.
Absolutely. So, by enhancing this and adding the buoys and other things, this could in return kind of add some tourism back, getting more anglers in the area, more boaters in the area because they feel safer in the waters, would that be accurate to say?
Yeah, I think at the end of the day, Fish and Boat believes that. There will be a time, in full disclosure, when that bridge project is going on, that there's going to be a significant portion of the river that will be inaccessible due to construction issues, so. There will be a loss to the boating public and the fishing public, but at the end of the day, once this project's done, it will give greater safety and a better idea where you can go and where you can't go.
In the long term.
Long term, correct.
Absolutely, thank you, no further questions.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rawls, any questions?
Thank you, President Hill, good evening, Director Enderline, I don't have any questions, I know it's something that needs to be done, and I'm glad that the buoys will be larger, as you said, for people to be able to grab a hold of if they need to get to safety, so, I don't have any questions.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Green, any questions?
Thank you, President Hill, I don't have any questions, I think the safety of the dam is something that's been discussed for a long time, so I'm just glad to see something moving forward, so, thank you.
We are excited as well.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davis, any questions?
Thank you, no questions, thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Daniels, any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much for being here this evening. I move to add Resolution 30 of 2025 to our next legislative session agenda for a formal vote. Next, we have Resolution 37 of 2025. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution, Resolution 37 of 2025. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a cosponsorship agreement with TLC Work-Based Training Program Incorporated for the implementation of a workforce development program in an amount not to exceed $75,000. And if I may add, there are brochures and added information placed on your desks about this program.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Who is present from the Administration to discuss the resolution?
President Bowers, Ms. Reed is here as well, and Mr. Castillo had just reached out, he's coming across the bridge, so.
Okay. You're welcome to have a seat.
I guess our office will speak for this for the moment. This is, this is the, a mayor's proposal for a workforce program that our office then made inquiries with Mr. Castillo and regarding the educational portion of it, which is the ABC, I forget the full name of the school that does Keystone, that does the training, it has a four-year program, but it also has a one-year program where you can get a certificate in one, one area versus a series of areas over four years. So, it would be basically the initiation of a project for one year. The $75,000 from the instruction from the mayor was that would represent a contribution to five of the students' education and wages, you know, that it's partnership, but these people are going to be paid, and I think the, I think Mr. Castillo can speak to that better and Ms. Reed, but, and there's both tuition at the school and there's costs, so this is a, it's not even close to most of the money per student, but it's a contribution by the city towards workforce development for, and it's for five individuals is the initial time, and as far as I know, it's the first time the city's gone into a workforce development related project. So, it is sort of, I think, for everybody, see how this goes, if it works, it's been a discussion for a long time by lots of city officials, so, but again, Mr. Castillo's going to be able to speak to it better, and Ms. Reed can speak to it.
Okay. Well, if you don't mind, I would like to wait for Mr. Castillo, that way we can have a full conversation and we won't be interrupted, so if you wouldn't mind, you can come, we'll bring it back when he arrives, and we'll move on to the next resolution, just to keep things moving, thank you. We'll move to Resolution 41 of 2025. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution 41 of 2025. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Conrad Segal Incorporated to provide an actuarial review of the city's healthcare program.
Thank you. Who on behalf of the Administration can provide an overview on Resolution 41?
I don't think Sam was doing it, but I do not see him.
Don't see him. That's what I thought, but I just, I didn't know if I was missing something. Okay. Do you mind coming on behalf of Conrad Segal?
Good evening.
Good evening, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself?
Yep, my name's John Sapochak, I'm a partner and consulting actuary with Conrad Segal.
Okay, if you wouldn't mind sharing a little bit about the scope of the work that's contained in this agreement?
Sure, so, the scope of the agreement effectively is to review the healthcare benefits, the operation of the plan, so the contracting for administrative services with the medical carrier, the prescription drug contracting, the stop-loss contracting, effectively, the financial elements that don't in any way alter benefits or networks or anything like that. You could call it looking for efficiency, it's also, it's been several years, to the best of my knowledge, since a professional like myself has looked at the plan, so it's sort of to check and make sure that things are operating as efficiently as they can, and also to evaluate the potential opportunity for the plan to go out to bid and try to do competitive contracting, which, there's pitfalls to that, so, this project falls short of that full exercise, it's evaluating the opportunity for it, and looking to achieve efficiencies, or if nothing else, certify that the plan is contracted effectively.
Thank you. Is there anything else the law bureau would like to add on behalf of the Administration?
No, other than that this is one of the largest expenses, the medical care that we provide in the budget, so, you know, once in a while, when we look at it to see whether the money's being spent wisely, and the benefit commitments are being fulfilled, is of, I think, value to the taxpayers and to frankly, city staff and our retirees.
Thank you. I don't think I have any questions at this time, I'll open the floor to my colleagues who may have some questions for you. I'll begin with our Budget and Finance Committee Chair, Vice President Green, do you have any questions?
Thank you, President Hill, I'll start off with saying I think this is something that we need, especially because over the last year or so, we've had to go back a couple of times and increase the amount of medical in our lines for our budget, so I think it's really important, will this help us to estimate the cost when we're working on our budget?
It will, at least for the current year, part of what I'm going to do is a trend analysis, but I will also do like an actuarial rate development for whatever your next budget cycle is based on the rates that, or the data that I collect.
Okay. I think that's all that I have, just to note that the contract is not to exceed $20,000, and then you have your hourly rates listed out?
Yep.
They look a little high, but I don't know the, I don't know the market. I think that's all the questions I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davis, any questions?
Thank you, no questions for me.
Okay. Councilwoman Daniels, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rawls, any questions?
Thank you, good evening, thank you for coming, I don't have any questions, I know it is something that does need to be done, so, thank you.
Thanks. Councilman Rodriguez, any questions?
Thank you, Madam President, thank you for joining us this evening, and I'm just privy to how dire we could benefit from these services, I mean, I know with fire and police, you know, it's an ebb and flow, goes up and down as far as healthcare and they need it, so, we never wanted to be an opportunity where like, hey, we can't take care of you guys, so, have you gotten a chance to really take a deep dive into our healthcare plan already, or is it something you plan on doing once it's approved?
It's something I'd have to do after it's approved, because some of the data I'd get would be confidential, so it would all happen post, I have a familiarity with the benefits, and years ago, actually, I had done some work on the retiree plans through my firm, but that's a long time ago, in current terms, I have a familiarity with the structure, but not the specifics of the claims in particular, or even the contracting.
So, besides your expertise and your experience already in the field, what's something you feel you can bring as far as a benefit way to the City of Harrisburg?
So, the prescription drug in particular is something, it's, odds are, when costs are going, especially right now, a lot of it is driven by prescription drug utilization, so I think part of this is to evaluate the contracting and make sure that's as effective as it can be from a cost efficiency perspective, I think that's probably the biggest part of this exercise, is just to ensure, that's a complicated area, and it's something I spend a lot of time dealing with, this is not about changing benefits, like, the benefits are all set, this is about trying to find efficiency within that.
Maximize them.
Yes, exactly.
Now, what about consolidation, is that something you may be able to do in your field as well, if you feel as though there may be too many third-party ventures for one, you know, plan, would you be able to consolidate, or would that be changing the plan?
So, it's, it's an excellent question, and it probably, it, part of the evaluation here is to whether you could do like an RFP type process to look at consolidation of vendors, when you, when you change a vendor, there is inherently a downstream change, like, things are never exactly the same.
Absolutely.
And I don't know, without more time to talk with legal and things like that, what would constitute like a true benefit change, so I'm, is it possible I would see an opportunity for it, yes, does that mean you can act on it? Not necessarily, but it is something I'll look at.
And that's fair, thank you for that answer, no further questions.
Thank you. Councilman Jones, any questions?
Yes, how are you doing today?
Good, how are you?
Good, good. My question would be, I know it says not to exceed 20,000, however, what's the anticipated hours, do you anticipate to get this done, and, so if you don't reach the 20, and, I mean, if you do and have to exceed, do you have to come back and ask for more money?
It's capped, and based, based on where the cap is, I expect I would reach it in all likelihood, but it is capped, there is no fee after, when I reach the fee cap, all the extra hours are on my end, I wouldn't come back and ask for more.
So, you don't have like a estimated hour?
I'll say this, I think it'll go over the, my time will go over, but the bill will be capped at 20, based on the scope of the work, even just the initial meeting that we had done, but I want to keep this within a reasonable budget, basically, for this type of exercise.
Stop at 15, 15 is good, you can stop at 15. No, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. If there are no additional questions, did you want to add anything to the discussion?
I'm sorry I'm late, I thought this meeting started at 6 o'clock, so.
No, no, it's a work session, it's 5:30.
I understand, it was my mistake, so, yeah, if I look at the thing, it does say 5:30, so I apologize for that, and I appreciate Conrad Segal being here to answer your questions, and, and hoping you answer, I'll have to go back and look at it and make sure things are right, but.
I can't really hear on my end.
I'm sorry, what?
She can't hear you? If you wouldn't mind either moving closer to the microphone or using that one, thank you.
Yeah, I think the objective here for us as an administration was, you know, our health insurance is costing us $14,000 a year, to take a look at it, at least from this perspective, to see whether we can save money at all, I think it's worthwhile to spend this small amount of money to find out whether going fully insured- To find out whether going fully insured or staying self-insured is, is most cost-effective. And I think during, over the summer, we actually started this process back in February with the Human Resource Department, myself and the Finance Director. And we actually interviewed a couple of different firms, Blue Cross being another one, and they were, I think their fee was like seventy thousand dollars. So this is the, was the most cost-effective way of doing it. So I would appreciate your support. Me, it's a potentially a savings of, of a couple of million dollars, potentially, whether that's true or not, I, I won't know anything. And it's hard to make a decision until you actually know what those numbers look like. So I think that's the biggest thing, is we need to find out, you know, whether fully insured, and I've done this process before. Where we went from, you know, high deductibles to low deductibles and fully insured, on abandoned coverage, and we were able to save a quarter of a million dollars a year. And that was when I was in Mount Joy, PA, so whether we can save money here, well, we won't find out for, probably a month or two, so. And if you have any other questions for me, please don't hesitate.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, council members?
Yes, so if, if, if you don't, you don't really know how much it will save. So if you see, once you, once he comes back with his assessment and you look at it. Is there a possibility that you can switch to another provider and put out other RFPs to continue to save money for the city?
Well, the, the RFPs are from a two-fold perspective. One is to do an RFP for fully insured, and another RFP to do self-insured. So we'll, we'll, we'll get both of those numbers together and we'll have to look at it, do an analysis and say which one is going to save us money. We, we may end up staying exactly where we are, but we don't know that, and you won't know that until you actually see the numbers.
That was my question, like, so if you, once you see the numbers, is there a potential for you to, to switch, or like you just said, you can stay right where you are?
It's quite likely we could, we could switch, I'm not opposed to switching, I'm not, and this is something we actually discussed in my interview process, okay? You know, so that was in, what, September or so of last year? We had the discussion in my interview, when it was before that panel, about looking at our insurance. And that was an objective of the administration, and I said, I've done that before and explained the process I went through when I was in Mount Joy. And I said, until you do the RFPs and, so to do an RFP to be self-insured and do an R, separate simultaneous RFP to be fully insured, you have to do that. And look at the numbers and be willing to change if, if that so warrants it. I mean, if you're able to save, I'm going to throw out a number, so don't hold me to this, if you can save a million dollars a year in coverage, you know, why wouldn't you do it? I don't know why, but we can't make that decision as an administration and you as a council, until we actually see what the numbers look like.
You answered my question, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay, seeing and hearing none, I moved at Resolution forty-one of two thousand and twenty-five to our next legislative session agenda for a formal vote. Thank you, thank you. I'd like to return to Resolution thirty-seven of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Castile is present. That's what I was going to suggest, sitting here, I don't know what, what's wrong with that microphone. Thank you. Yeah. Good evening, how are you?
All right, how are you doing?
I'm doing fine. Mr. Grover provided a brief overview of Resolution thirty-seven of two thousand and twenty-five regarding. The city's negotiation of entering into a cosponsorship agreement. With TLC Work-Based Training Program Incorporated for the implementation of a workforce development program. In an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars. So we were just trying to understand, from your perspective, a little bit more about perhaps the five students who might be participating. Or those that are eligible to participate, and what the program might entail.
Good evening, the, the five students is basically whoever first come, first served. We work with hard-to-place individuals, ex-offenders, veterans, whoever is interested in learning and training in construction. We don't.
I'm sorry, can you move that microphone closer to you? Thank you.
Yeah, our five students is for ex-offenders, veterans, hard-to-place individuals, anyone that's interested in, in learning in the construction trade. Our apprenticeship program, TLC Work-Based Training, we're in a partnership with ABC Contractors Association, where we're a member of ABC. But we were doing our own thing at first for seven years, and then I became a member of ABC Contractors Association. Our apprenticeship program is certified through laboring industry, but ABC, I mean, TLC is certified through laboring industry. As well as ABC's is certified through ABC Contractors Association. But I found that it was easier for me to build more capacity and utilize more people in my own community if I partnered with ABC. Because they have a variety of trades, it ain't just carpentry, the only thing I do is carpentry. They do HVAC plumbing, carpentry, and all the trades. So a person don't have to say they want to do carpentry, they could say they want to do HVAC or plumbing. And I could still get them in because I'm already a member. So the, through TLC Work-Based Training, our program, we train them, give them classroom training, but we do field work. So TLC Work-Based Training is a developer in the City of Harrisburg. We utilize our trainees on our own projects, where they get hands-on skills. And even on other projects besides my own personal projects, we do, you know, whatever project we, we land with the for-profit construction company. Far as how we will utilize it, like the apprenticeship program, it runs from like a regular school year, September to May. We had guys that was already in it, but we want to, and I paid for them myself. But the city wanted to partner up and bring a few more guys on, so they said they wanted to see if they can want to, like a pilot. They wanted to get five people trained, so I say, I can get you five people, I can run them through ABC, work with us, and then we can still get their hands on working with TLC. And then, but the, the good thing about partnering with ABC is the other contractors that's members. And if they need help with, or, or want to take a few trainees to work with them, they can still, whatever trade it is. Because like I said, I, I specifically do carpentry, if they doing HVAC or plumbing, it might be a plumbing contractor need apprentice, they can run through there. And then it's, the apprenticeship program, like you can test out, like it's a four-year apprentice. But if you can test and you feel you're not on an apprenticeship one level, you test, do a, a, a test and you pass and they say, oh, well, he should be an apprenticeship two. You, you know, you move a little further and faster. But it's a credential program, they've been in business since nineteen seventy-two. And we, I mean, I gave you guys a pamphlet of ABC and TLC Work-Based Training Program. So you can, you know, it's a accredited program, been around for a long time, so. And ABC's nationwide.
Okay. So I guess, following the apprenticeship program, what happens next to these five individuals? Are they auto, do they automatically gain employment? Do they have a series of certifications where they could move on?
Well, they get certi- certifications if they pass what they need to pass at ABC.
Each person, okay.
And like, they're not guaranteed with me, I mean, like, you gotta, you know, do your credit hour, attendance, all that play a part. So if you're not, you know, showing up and doing what you're supposed to do, I mean, you're not, nobody's going to guarantee you work just because, you know, you was, you was, you paid for a program. You gotta participate and, you know, show up, basically, you know, do your thing. And if you do what you're supposed to do, I'm going to guarantee you, if you're working in carpentry with me, I would, I would definitely guarantee you. Because I'm trying to build my team and capacity with people from my own community.
Okay, and then I have one more question. So if this is a pilot program, how are we evaluating the program to make sure that, okay, well, these five individuals successfully completed the program? Maybe we could expand it next year, or what, what will the evaluation process look like?
Well, the evaluation process is basically, are they showing up, is their attendance, uh, uh, how, are they showing up every day? Are they participating? Are they gaining, you know, because it's going to show from when they taking these tests. Is, is they, you know, basically, they learning anything? And if they are, we sho- we're going to be able to show, we want, we have documentation that, you know, this is what's happening, this is, uh, uh, this person's learned this, this person learned that. But we, we want to use people that want to be there, I don't want to, like, sometimes people just push people in the program just because, but if they don't want to be there. I don't, you know, most time they're not going, the, 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 we want to, they're not going to really gain anything if they don't want to be there. We want people that want to be there, because at the end of the day, the, the teachers, they have a, uh, how would you say? They have, uh, they, they want people that want to be there, basically. And we want people, out by them coming through TLC Work-Based Training, I want people that want to be there, not because we stipulated them there. Or we say, oh, we're going to pick these people, no, we want people that want to learn the trade. Because I, I listened in on a lot of things that have been going on in our community, and even in the election, everybody was saying about training, I've been doing this stuff. And like I said, it's a lot of times I don't market, but I partnered up with another entity that's larger that we can broaden that base. Because it's not a, as far as capacity in our own community, even in our VOTEC in the city, we don't have it. And by me, at the table, I can bring in as many as, as I can, because they're, I mean, these, they have five hundred and some students there. And it's, and they partnered up with Dolphin County VOTEC, Berks County, Cumberland County, Lancaster County, VOTECs. But I don't see none of us there, and the only reason they at the table now is because they coming through TLC Work-Based Training. So they say they will partner with Dolphin County, but I don't, I don't really see it. But like I said, but with us at the table, I know for a fact they there, you know what I mean, and they doing a good job. Because I just, the guys that I put in last year, they just finished up their first year and they got like three certifications already. And they looking forward to go back for their apprenticeship two, this coming September.
Thank you.
And Madam President, because this is a negotiating or into resolution, the, the administration with Mr. Castile can work in some kind of report-back thing. So the condition, so the council will get information on how the program went. Because if it works well, I think everybody wants more people in the city trained into a skillset that they can make a living on. So, but we can work that condition into the, the agreement.
Thank you. I did have another question, I'm, I'm not sure Solicitor Grover, if it's appropriate for you or Finance. Where is the funding coming from?
I, I, I think Finance has to answer that question, yes.
Okay.
I'm sure someone told me, but I don't.
If I'm correct, it's in the budget resolution that's coming up next, so if you look at that, it does show the, the funds where it's coming from.
Okay, well, we'll, to be continued, I just wanted it on the record for this conversation, but thank you. I don't have any other questions, I'm going to open the floor to my colleagues who may have some additional questions regarding the program and partnership. I'll begin with our Community and Economic Development Committee Chair, Councilwoman Daniels. Do you have any questions regarding Resolution thirty-seven of two thousand and twenty-five?
Yeah, from the city's portion, where is the seventy-five thousand coming from?
That is something we're discussing in our budget resolution, which is coming up next, but if you give me a moment, let's see, I have it pulled up here. I believe it shows that it's coming from the general liability premium, the public office and official premium, and the police professional premium. Looks like where it's moving from, those three lines.
So are those insurance policies or, or trainings?
They look like they are insurance policies.
I think Finance can speak to that better when they get up here, so.
To be continued.
Okay. Okay. And then I, I, some of this, the information kind of kept going in and out, so apologies if you already answered this. Our portion is just, what we're contributing is just a portion of the cost, what's the total cost per student?
Typical cost, HVAC is close to four thousand, uh, uh, a year. Carpentry's three thousand and some odd dollars, they, they're roughly, roughly between thirty-five to four thousand. The rest, the balance will be getting their tools, their, their equipment, buying material to, you know, to practice with, you know. And that's really very cheap, because actually, I, I have other grant through laboring industry that basically covers a lot. But the, the, since you're only doing five, this is basically a small portion of, so we just want, you know, I have other grant sources that, uh, help train, train people. But bringing in another five is, that's, that's pretty cheap, because we got to still do administration.
Okay, and I think that's it for me, I'll follow up during the budget session.
Okay, thank you. Vice President Green, any questions?
Uh, yes, I have a couple of questions, first, thank you for being here tonight. First, I know you said that it's open to anyone, but are there age requirements to participate in the program?
Oh, it's eighteen to, you know, I would say thirty-five, because we have two gentlemen around twenty-nine, thirty. But, I mean, it's seventeen if you've been, you know, you're out of school or whatever, you know, some people graduate early, so it's their age, it starts, start around seventeen until thirty-four.
Uh, must they have a high school diploma?
Not necessarily, you know, because it's a lot of tradesmen don't have a high school diploma. There's certain things, certain trades, you don't have to have a, a GED or a diploma. I mean, as long as you know the fundamentals of, basically how to measure, cut, stuff like that, you know, you don't have to.
All right, what's the total length of time, did you say four years?
It depends on what you've taken up, if you want to become a journeyman, it's going to take you four years. If you just want to learn how to hang drywall, it might only take you a couple of months. If you just want to do roofing, it might take you a couple of months, but if you trying to be well-rounded in the whole thing of carpentry, it's going to take you four years, you know what I mean, so.
Okay.
And then other, like I said, uh, plumbing and electric, HVAC is different, but I'm telling you what carpentry is, is, is going to take you four years.
Okay.
To be a journeyman.
All right, and so the funding would cover the tuition pretty much for five people for four years?
No, one year.
One year.
You have to apply every year.
Okay, so every year they would reapply?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I'm going to apply for them, I'm going to try to apply and get the funding for the government, because I don't even make my own guys pay, I pay for it myself, and I go after funding.
All right. Let me see, um.
So it's basically free for the students.
Right.
While I try to get funding, the government.
Okay, is this your first time partnering with ABC?
Yes. But I had my own apprenticeship for seven years.
Right, so for the ABC program, this is a pilot for that whole partnership?
No, it's not a pilot with the partnership with me, it's a pilot with the city, like far as, you know, this is my first time working with the city.
I know, I'm asking, have you worked with ABC before? Like your company, have you guys had a partnership with ABC and TLC?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's established.
Yes.
All right, that's, that was my question, was that new or was, I know that the, the partnership with the city is new, but you've worked with TLC before and had success with the program before?
Yes.
All right, and you have like the statistics on how many people have come through your program? I know you might not have it tonight, but if you could get it to us, that would help.
Well, far as the ABC, no, because I've only been sending guys through this year through ABC and our partnership. Before I had, before I had a partnership with ABC, we were already doing it by ourselves, and we had our own shop up at the, uptown Harrisburg.
Okay, if you could just get us the numbers of how many people that you've worked with, um, have completed your program, just the success of it, so we can kind of look at that, that would be helpful. And then I guess my last question. Um, and then I guess my last question for the moment is how did the partnership with the city happen? Like, I know we've talked about it a couple of times about like how we can, um, have apprenticeship programs. I believe during our ARPA funding, we had a very deep conversation and actually allocated money towards a, a internship program, um, for, for the residents of Harrisburg. So I, I originally thought the money would have been coming out of there. And so when I saw that it was being pulled from different directions, I was like, okay, pretty cool. I guess maybe the city's still looking, uh, to do a, an internship program on its own or with another partnership, uh, which I think we could benefit from having more than one. But I guess just kind of how the idea come about? Was it just like a conversation? Did you come to the city, did they come to you?
It was a conversation, I guess it was during God, uh, debate. And then, uh, people, everybody was talking about it. So I said, I already been at it. So she asked me would they, would we be willing to teach other people? I said, yeah, I mean, I've been doing it. So the city just came on board with it. So it's not, you know, I kind of, it just came over in a conversation because I was at the debates.
Okay, so it's kind of organic?
Yes.
It wasn't like you sent a proposal into the city or anything like that? Okay. All right, thank you. I think that's all the questions I have for the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Davis, any questions?
Thank you, President Hill. And good evening. And I want to say congratulations on this, um, dual partnership. My questions are, is there a probationary period for any of the students? To say if, if they're not meeting the goals or if they're not up to par, is there a probationary period in the program?
No, I wouldn't say it's a probationary period. Now, they'd take, they'd take an aptitude test before they even, you know, uh, we enroll, say, we're going to select this person, we're going to select that person. And like, say, three out of the five, we, we, you sent didn't pass aptitude, they're not going to be able to go into the class. So you have to give me some, somebody else. But they got to take an aptitude test.
Okay. And I think my other questions were answered, so I'll, I'll pass. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Councilwoman Ross, any questions?
Thank you, President Hill. Thank you for being here tonight, Mr. Castillo. Um, a program, of course, we definitely need in the city. I know something we've been talking about with work-based, um, it came up with the ARPA money. Like we were just saying, where we thought it was, the money was probably coming from for work-based programming. So thank you for, um, being willing to, um, want to partner with us in some type of way to, uh, get some workforce development done within our city. Um, most of my questions have actually been answered, um, or asked at least. Um, I think my biggest thing was, um, if this gets passed, just look, seeing the metrics of it, like coming back and being able to say, okay, um, you know, this worked, it didn't work, or this is what we could have done better, this, how many students, um, actually did well as we combined with ABC. So I think, um, if you were just willing to, you know, share that out, um, after the first year, that would be helpful to see if it does need to continue. Um, and as you said, it was a pi- the pilot program, um, carpentry takes four years, but you would be, um, if everything goes as planned, you would be wanting to come every year for the seventy-five thousand because this would only take care of this year. And it would start, what would you say, September to May? So it would start this September and go to next May?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Well, that's more of a classroom, uh, you can do hands-on work before then. You know, just that's the ABC teacher's theory.
Right, okay.
So they can start hands-on.
Okay, thank you. I think, yes, I think that, that's it. Most of my questions have been answered, so, okay, thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez, any questions?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Castillo, for joining us this evening. Um, I see a lot of your projects around the area, highly impressive. Uh, thank you for all the work you've been doing for the duration of time you've been doing it. Um, on the website right now, looking at the asbestos removal training, I think that's impressive as well with a lot of our historic buildings in the city. You know, that's a huge issue, uh, William Penn, et cetera, et cetera. So thank you for your work. Um, I have no questions. I just, uh, look forward to seeing the accomplishments and how this pans out throughout the course. And, uh, hopefully we could develop that system of metrics where we can get some kind of feedback to see how everything's going, to see how the students excel throughout the program, et cetera. So thank you.
All right.
No further questions.
Thank you. Councilman Jones, any questions?
Yes, uh, thank you for coming through this evening. Um, so what's your blood type and your social security? No. Uh, one of, a lot of my questions have been asked and answered, but one of the things I would, uh, like you, for you to explain, just during, um, part of the cost of the training that you have with the youth, first of all, where you pull, where are you pooling or pulling these, um, young individuals from? And when does the, some of this goes to some of the, the training costs and some of the materials? But what about OJT for those individuals? Or can they make money while going through this?
Yeah, if they doing on-the-job training, uh, I do pay for on-the-job training. And most, all contractors, when they, uh, pull people from the, uh, classroom to work with them, they always getting paid on-the-job training. So, uh, the money, like I said, um, you calculate the four thou-, do you just say average thirty-five hundred per the four thou-, depending on what they taking? So, uh, calculate that times five, then you calculate their matu- their tools and, uh, equipment that they going to need, uh, their, uh, you know, uh, materials that they going to utilize, uh, that's honestly is a wash because what you, uh, materials is to the roof at seventy-five thousand dollars, I mean, is, is a wash. It's not really, we're going to be supplying a lot of the materials anyway. But there, with the, the training, if they mess up something, we, it's not costing me. Nobody likes to train people and, and it's not, it's costing them. So at the end of the day, you know, they going to make mistakes. So that's why, you know, we, uh, have money in for materials. But we, we go after other funding, not just with the city. Uh, to have people doing training, they got to be able to, uh, do on-the-job training. They going to make mistakes because they're new. So if they cut something wrong or, or did this wrong, we got money to pay for the materials.
So, um, one of my other questions was with that is like, where do you select these individuals from? I know you had a range from seventeen to thirty-five, so that.
Well, most of the time, we just, uh, people come to us. Um, like I said, our marketing is, is far as TLC work, I didn't use to market it like that. People already just knew. Like they'd come to us on, uh, on, on a construction site, ask, can they work with scene? Find out what type of experience they got. Most of them didn't have any experience. So we might, um, what I, I used to do is just have them go to the, uh, classroom up the, up the, up the building and sign up. And then, uh, you know, we'll do a little test, see what they know, where they at. And like I said, most, I ain't going to say most, but a lot didn't have no background or they didn't, couldn't pass that test. So at the end of the day, um, you know, if they didn't, they don't have basic math skills, it's, it's hard to train somebody. So at the end of the day, I'm not here to teach you the basics of math. So if you, it's not saying this, I'm going to count you out, but we can point you, well, ABC, they point you, they'll start you out with basic, they do teach all that type of stuff. I don't do that, but they will teach the fundamentals of math. ABC Keystone will teach you the, the, the basic maths and stuff to get you up to par because you, you, you know, without those type of, uh, uh, classes to bring you up to par, you're not going to be able to succeed in construction because you, basic math is a necessity.
So my question would be for administration. Um, are they look, is administration also looking to help with the selection? Are they going to partake?
I, 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 we, the city, as I understand, is not going to be involved. We're simply supplementing what has already started so that more opportunity is available.
Okay, so, uh, the other thing I will ask you, uh, Mr. Castillo, is, um, sustainability. I know this is a pilot program. So let's say I come into the program and I just want to do drywall, right? I can leave out of there and that's a, is that, that's a part of, of your construction program or your carpentry program? So that individual will be able to go right to work, just in that area?
Yeah, yeah, if that's all they want to learn and they go through there and learn what they need in carpentry, I mean, drywall, and, uh, feel that they, they ready to work, yeah.
So, and you also have said you mentioned that you've done this for seven years on your own already. So the sustainability, when, um, this program is over, let's say we use all of the seventy-five thousand for, uh, the individuals, but they haven't completed the four-year process, they only got to a certain level. And the city says, hey, you know, we don't like how this turned out. Will you be able to sustain those individuals afterwards with the other funding that you get?
Well, I, I can, but you can sustain people just with work period. They, they don't have to continue to go to school because if they learned what they want to learn out of it. Because some people don't want to do four years. They might learn roofing and that's all they want to do. So when we got jobs and we got roofing to do, uh, I'm putting them to work. So at the end of the day, uh, you know, once a person get their own, get their craft together, they might not want to work for me. They might want to go off and be their own subcontractor and start their own.
That was my next question. So are they able, these, these accreditations are, are, are nationally are recognized?
Yes, so, yeah, ABC stuff is, is accredited nationally. So at the end of the day, if they get their certification, they don't want to work for me. They want to sub for me or sub from somebody else, they can do that.
That's all I have, President Hill. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, are there any other questions, Mr. Castillo, Vice President Green?
Yes, thank you. I do have a couple more questions. Um, one, if someone's interested, how would they apply?
You just got to go up to the hub, up to the hub, the, the, uh, the hub uptown Harrisburg and apply there. But, uh, we have a website that they're, we going to attach to it once with that, you know, around now. They got to, you know, got to put that on the website now because it's close to that time to start getting people registering, selecting who we going to utilize. And like I said, the first five might not be past the test, so we not going to save the first five. It depends on who, uh, passed the aptitude out of the first group that, yeah, that qualified, that's going to be able to go.
Okay, and then last question, if you could just provide, I know you probably already provided one to the city, but it wasn't provided to us, like a, a cost breakdown, a budget breakdown, so that we can see like the cost predictions of how much it's going to cost, make, you know, like the overall cost of the program. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
So there, I think one detail is missing is that I think the programs all have a significant number of on-the-job hours to get the accreditation. And I, I'm not the one who was in that work. I think Jonathan looked into that.
So, uh, essentially, if you're in the four-year, it breaks down two thousand hours of on-the-job training a year. For if you're in the four-year, it's eight thousand, so, and I believe that Mr. Castillo is trying, you know, admirably to at least pay people fifteen to twenty dollars an hour, which if you're doing that, that's on my full-time, you're talking almost forty, fifty thousand dollars a person just on the on-the-job training. The, that's really where the majority of the money is because the majority of the hours and the work and the time, that's where it goes to. So the ABC really is a small portion of the actual money. And that doesn't include the administration costs and everything else.
Real fast, um, I, I also wanted to get a clarification, um, just for the audience as well, with the pre-apprenticeship and apprenticeship.
Pre, uh, we are apprentice, we have certified apprenticeship through laboring industry. Pre-apprentice, I mean, is, is, it's a little different. I mean, people, you're recognizing, you get certified with, through a real apprenticeship. Pre-apprentice, you can get a certificate, but it's not a certification in whatever you're doing.
That's all.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing and hearing none. Um, Mr. Castillo, there was some information requested, so I would like to receive that information, have some time to adequately review it, um, before moving forward with this resolution for a vote. That may include additional questions for you, but we'll let you know if we, um, if any other questions come up after the additional information is shared. So I'd like to, um, keep Resolution Thirty Seven of Two Thousand and Twenty Five in the Administration Committee, um, until we receive the additional information requested. Thank you for your participation this evening. This concludes the work of the Administration Committee. We will move forward with our meeting agenda. The next committee business you will hear, um, will come from the Budget and Finance Committee. I will defer to our Budget and Finance Committee Chair, Vice President Green, to lead discussion.
Thank you, President Hill. Um, the next resolution for the Budget and Finance Committee is Resolution Twenty Eight of Two Thousand and Twenty Five. Mr. Parker, could you read it into the record, please?
Yes. Resolution Twenty Eight of Two Thousand and Twenty Five. A resolution approving the third proposed Twenty Twenty Five budget reallocation.
Thank you very much. I believe the Finance Department is going to give us a presentation and overview. Good evening, gentlemen. If you wouldn't mind introducing yourself and then, uh, giving us a, an overview, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. I'm Timothy Brooks, I'm the Budget Manager.
Yes, uh, good evening, City Council Members. Brian McCutcheon, Accounting Manager. All right.
All right. So before us today, here is the third proposed, uh, budget adjustment for Two Thousand and Twenty Five. Um, let me turn this to us, look at this a little bit easier. Uh, what you'll see is, uh, in Exhibit A, uh, seventy-five thousand dollar requests, uh, for the proposed budget adjustment enabling the skilled trades training efforts with benefiting youth career path pro, excuse me, benefiting youth career path program. I believe that's alluding to, uh, Mr. Castillo and, uh, his, um, comments. Um, and then moving down to Exhibit B, uh, for forty-five thousand dollars, which represents, um, uh, to make available funding for custodial supplies, uh, needs within Facility and Maintenance Department. I'm open to questions at this one.
All right, I'm just going to open it up for questions. I'm going to start to be my far right with Councilwoman Daniels. Any questions? I meant to say I'm going to start with my far left with Councilman Jones. Any questions?
Sure. So, uh, from my understanding, if I'm reading this correctly, it, it came from the Public Office and Official Premium where, um, the available balance right now, uh, as of five twenty-two, twenty-five, is ninety-five thousand, thirty-four cent, I mean, thirty-four dollars and zero cents, and that's where they pulling the whole seventy-five from?
Yeah, okay, yep. Yes, uh, uh, Councilman Jones, that actually a, a com- a com- a combining effect on these two lines. The, the footnotes A and B, um, the, the seventy-five thousand pertains to what was just discussed, Resolution Thirty Seven, Two Thousand and Twenty Five, and the additional adjustment of forty-five thousand related to facilities maintenance for custodial. Those two asks for proposed adjustment total to the one hundred and twenty thousand. So how do we go about, you know, funding that? And i- in terms of this, this presents a pure reallocation from available budgetary savings in the insurance premium lines within general expenses and, and also the, the police professional premium. That came about by way of the, the, the premium. Actually, the premium for these lines is a, is a combined package that the city pays in quarterly installments. And we actually, they're, they're always due near- And we actually, they're they're always due near the beginning of the the quarter, the calendar quarter. So the quarter that was coming up uh at the end of last year, the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-five, there was actually enough budget in the two thousand and twenty-four budget to accommodate the the quarterly premium. Long story short, what that hap- what that resulted in was some budgetary savings. This was after the 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 two thousand and twenty-five budget was passed. But there was an, there was an opportunity to pay that quarterly premium a- at at very near the uh close to the end of December of twenty-four. So that achieves.
Are you saying there was a discount because you paid the premium on time or before?
Not, not, not so much a discount, it was just timing. We were able, we were able to accommodate a payment for the upcoming quarter. Instead of having it paid in January of two thousand and twenty-five, it was paid right near the end of twenty-four. Exactly. So based on, we we still have uh one quarter to pay, um that's a a solid number. And then the quarter that's ending September, the city is an October one through September thirty insurance policy period for just about all of our coverages. So we took a look at that and and based on what we we know will be the uh the the quarter for September and then the new premium, when the city goes to renew for the next policy period, it, there's a built-in increase, but it's still an estimate. But we feel like there's enough savings there to accommodate these two uh requests that are being brought forth this evening.
Okay, so this question may be too early to ask, but I'll ask it. So let's just say that this pilot program is successful. Uh I don't know if we'll be in the same space or same opportunity to be able to pull from these uh from these line items. So um does the administration have any idea of how they're gonna do this moving forward?
I would suggest that's too early to ask, right? And 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 even by the two thousand and twenty-six budget discussion, uh I, you you won't be through the whole year yet, right? There may be an idea that it's working or it's not working. Um but so, and if it's working, I would assume it gets into the two thousand and twenty-six budget request. Um but but you won't really even have a solid data for how the year went. So, you know, assuming the council adopts this before the end of June, you know, you're gonna really have like a July one to June thirtieth agreement, you know, to do this. And so you're you're gonna take, you're gonna, you're only gonna be a little bit in by the time you get to the budget.
Okay, my last question is, um why was it chosen to be pulled from here?
It's always good to do, uh we 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 call them reallocations, a pure reallocation is just what this is. You you realize savings in certain lines that you can utilize in in other lines depending on what materializes. It's it's definitely a prefer- preferred approach as as opposed to taking it from beginning of your cash fund balance. So as not to deplete that and also not to 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 skew the budget that that's been approved. So it's it's just working within, uh you know, constantly reviewing the lines throughout the year to see how certain lines are developing. To, I I should stop. I mean, Tim, if you have any more.
I monitor the budget on a monthly basis, sometimes even more than that, so um.
So it's you?
It is me. Yes, um to be able to find savings for things and opportunities like this, so um this, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I, you know, I think again, um um going off of what uh Vice President Green was talking about, I think there was already a set aside at one point with ARPA funding and just wondering why. And then, you know, come from there, but you know, you pretty much answered my question. Now here's Neil, let's go.
No, I I don't know that it's in the two thousand and twenty-five budget, right? So when we're talking about allocation versus reallocation, if if it's in the general fund balance and this, and that's in the state grant funds now, and it wasn't allocated for a program this year, that would then be, I think, from Finance's office, a general fund tapping into it and making the budget larger for the year, where this keeps the budget at the same size.
Okay. No further questions?
I forgot it was on me. Councilman Rodriguez. I'm standing here thinking about other things, I'm not gonna, okay, I'm gonna ask that question, okay. Councilman Rodriguez, any questions?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Thank you, Mr. Brooks, uh Mr. Brian, for joining us this evening. Um, understanding uh the premium line items we're pulling from, do you see any or foresee any future issues with us doing this? As far as the premiums and, you know, um the gentleman that just kind of presented in front of us, he's gonna have oversight, kind of making sure we can incur more savings in the future. Um so just knowing that there were savings and we're kind of allocating it this way or looking to allocate it this way, do you foresee any potential issues that this could cause?
As of today, I don't see any. I'll defer to Brian.
I certainly wouldn't want to come back to these lines later on, definitely, because now they're at a, I feel like they're at a, because I looked at the calculation, I I feel like they're at a, I'll call it like a minimal comfort zone. Uh because again, that last quarter of this year is is an estimate and it's insurance premium calculation-based.
But you understand why my question, it could be a little worrisome, just want to make sure we stay in a good pocket there.
I I I think, I think we're we're in a good spot there. And again, if 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 something would come up later, you, again, it would be the same take to try to look at lines that are generating any type of savings. I think, I think this council's familiar with two, I believe. Um sometimes needs happen and we 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 can look at personnel line savings that that might materialize during the year, which is totally reasonable to, and and my view on that is to to utilize budget that we know, you know, based on uh detailed salary calculations, what may or may not be available.
Got you. And then the forty-five thousand for the custodial supplies, how much cleaning are we planning on doing? Sorry for my satire, I just had to, I had to.
Essentially, um that was not budgeted within the the budgeting process this year. I believe right now the line is uh and it's running in the negative and we actually need to correct that line. So um custodial services or supplies is absolutely needed from year to year. Um and it was just a force, oversight that happened during the budget process.
I needed non-perishables like toilet paper, paper towel, spruums, mops, dustpans, like those kind of things?
I'm gonna assume so. I would have to defer to Mr. Baker for absolutes, but yes.
Uh, okay, um. Neil, any idea? By chance?
So so this is a typical annual budget item that inadvertently got zeroed out. So no, I don't really know which of the many custodial costs it is, but that, but because it was zeroed, it's like if you look at the number, it's like twenty thousand negative in May. So um so it was just when, when, it just is a line item error in the process.
Yep, and I mean, I I definitely trust your professionalism, it's just there was checks and balances. When you see forty-five K going into custodials, it's kind of alarming, but once again, totally trust your decision and hopefully this gets, you know, allocated to where our employees could use it the most.
We have many buildings.
Oh, I know, I know, I know. But I wouldn't be doing my due diligence if I didn't ask, so. I appreciate you gentlemen joining us and um that's all I have. Thank you.
And if if I may, Vice President Green, just to follow up on that, uh uh Councilman Rodriguez, uh the the Dave, the Facilities Maintenance Director, he came to us and and made this request. We weren't looking at it just from a, like an independent look. And and based on his discussion to, as as Solicitor Grover mentioned, there's, there's been activity in this line. And I think, I think Dave still anticipates more for the remainder of the year. So we're trying to cover that, that particular line.
Would um cost incurred in this line have to do with like maybe resurfacing the pool, things of that nature? Would that play a part in it or you're not too sure?
Yeah, yeah.
I know they've done a lot of work through Parks and Rec, I just, I've.
I'm I'm not too sure on that myself, and I know it's uh the the typical custodial wa- uh items, which include various cleaning supplies, ma- maintenance uh for building, building maintenance, various buildings.
If by chance you do um come across that answer, if you could communicate that with Madam Vice President, so she can let us know, that would be great.
Yeah, we we can run a report and 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 send that out to you to show what's transpired.
Yeah, item alone, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay.
Can you please clarify what you're, what you want us to?
Oh, just the um the forty-five thousand line for the uh custodial supplies?
You're referring.
It don't have to be specifically itemized, but just what in general with those, yeah, yep, yep. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ross.
Thank you, Vice President Green. Thank you both for being here tonight and explaining the reallocation. I don't really have questions. I think mine were just more of the concern because I know before we ran into some issues with the premiums um last time and we had to reallocate money. So um I guess I'm just a little, you know, on edge. I don't want us to have to come back to that. Um so I, you know, I'm just trusting you all, knowing you looked at it and you, I know Brian said we're we're at a a safe zone. We're a little bit of cushion. Um but um I think just moving forward, my thought process is if this program goes as the way that we would like it to, because we do need this workforce development, it's needed, we've talked about it, since I've been on council, um that we're looking at it in a proactive way and not a reactive way. Um and looking at where we're gonna be taking the money from, so we're standard with that all the time. I know that's just not up to you. That also comes down from the administration and then we come and approve it. But just making sure, you know, um if that's something you can advocate for, please. Um and I just have one question, Mr. Grover, actually just came to mind, um Solicitor Grover. So um just for clarification, clarification, because I know that we um council had suggested and we put money aside in the ARPA funds for uh workforce training. Are you saying that they can't take that money from there now because the budget's been passed and that's something that has to be a more proactive exercise?
So i- this is really understanding the fundamentals of the budget process, right? You voted for those programs in two thousand and twenty-three.
Yes.
Uh the mayor sent down and then from the roll forward in two thousand and twenty-four, several of the programs, but not, I think, four of them did not come through. So none of them were in the two thousand and twenty-four budget. So when there was a roll forward of the twenty-four budget, it's not there and it wasn't in the two thousand and twenty-five budget. So now it's just general fund money, just like any other general fund money. That's not, that that is not earmarked for any particular item. So this goes, there's always a fund balance policy where you keep some money, so you have basically a rainy day fund, right? And so it's in basically that general fund money and it's not earmarked for any one thing. A program could still be proposed by the mayor with that money, but it would then come out of the fund balance in the state grant funds where it is. So um but but in the budget process, if it doesn't roll forward and it's not in the budget, it doesn't exist anymore. Um the contract process for government, you, for any contract that's over twelve months, it's subject to a council's annual appropriation. Um and I would encourage you, if if these are things you'd like in the budget, that's part of the negotiation process, right? When you're negotiating for the, for the next year's budget. If you would like an item you proposed in it, you know, that's talking to the Finance Office, the the Business Administrator and the mayor. We think it's important to get this item back into the budget. We had it before, it it dropped out. Um and I, that, to me, that would be a normal negotiation process between the council and the administration.
Right, well, we did kind of do that this year, but it, well.
But nobody, just didn't get to do an amendment into the budget for two thousand and twenty-five.
Yeah, we did make some amendments with programming, but it didn't, didn't go through. So we kind of real- but but know that you're right, okay. Thank you, so. Gotcha. That's it for me.
Thank you, President Bowers.
Nothing really seems normal here, but um my question around the choice to utilize um these particular appropriations was asked and answered. I will say and reiterate, as I've been saying, um it would be helpful to gain an update on the ARPA programs that were um approved. Just to know where we stand, because if, I think if we did, we wouldn't be asking about this funding. We would have a better understanding of what's happening with it or nothing, as you've said.
I I believe, I um I'm sorry, I believe there was a request back and forth earlier in the spring. And I think that um Mr. Solkowski, if I'm saying his last name right, Sam was uh willing to come back and have a presentation uh and uh I, that is my understanding. So I think between the council and the Business Administrator, I think they can make that happen. I think he had uh the Finance Office working on a report for it. Um I don't know that that report was sent out or not.
No, we didn't receive anything. Um we invited, I don't know if she's the interim director or the director. I didn't see her um title on the news last night. Um so I'm not sure what she is or what her title is now for the Department of Building and Housing. But we invited her as the majority of the approved programming. Um it's our understanding lies in that department. Um so we didn't communicate with the Business Administrator as far as I know. But I'm happy to follow up because I think um, I just think it would be helpful moving forward so that there's no confusion as to um which programs have been approved and have movement forward, if any, um or if there's anything to share regarding the the funding.
I will pass that communication back forth. I I would frankly just recommend a discussion with the Business Administrator's Office, who oversees the rest of the staff to coordinate it. And I would suggest that the money's in at least three different departments. BBHD is one of them, but obviously Parks and Rec is in another, Facilities is in another. Um so so um I I would suggest, you know, the the best person to coordinate all of that for, uh would be the Business Administrator and the Finance Office. You know, all of the money gets spent because they go through those offices.
Okay. Well, I don't have any other questions um regarding the two reallocations. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Davis.
Thank you, Vice President Green. Good evening. Thank you for being here again this evening. A lot of my questions have been answered through the discussion already. I would just like to recap on the uh report for the custodial supplies. I was trying to understand, we're forty-five thousand dollars of cust- custodial supplies? You know, we're, how the money would be allocated? So will you be sending a list of supplies that could be purchased? Is that?
I could uh work with uh with uh Department Head Baker for us to provide a list um as well as provide a type of items um that was purchased on that or has been purchased on that line. Is that?
Okay, thank you. And could you elaborate a little bit for myself, as well as the public, on the insurance um piece where the money, this insurance money is, it's it's money that was not spent? And go ahead, Solicitor Grover.
Uh I'll take a crack at it.
How's that?
They budgeted for the full budget year for two thousand and twenty-five, for four quarters. They got to spend the first quarter money out of the two thousand and twenty-four budget. So there's a quarter of the money was, came out of last year's budget at the end of last year instead of the beginning of this year. So they budgeted for the entire year, but only now need three-quarters of the money. This is the insurance premium, which is not the payment for actual healthcare cost, right? So when they came, when we come back for more money, that's the actual healthcare cost when we've come back. This is the premium under a bundled policy and we have many, many forms of coverage. Um and that's, and this goes to the third-party administrators, I believe, and the insurers as their premium, the fees for their administrative work on the claims. So this is that annual budget. Do I have that right, Mr. McCutcheon?
Oh, yeah. I I wish I would have said it that well, first time, but he's right, uh very accurate, yes.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. And then, so this is, when we talk about insurance premiums, medical insurance, what are the insurances then?
Right, like the these particular lines, I mentioned there's a package, it includes these three lines. But it also includes like auto insurance premium, uh general liability, premium excess liability, I believe. There's about five or six different uh lines that make up the package. So the the comfort there is that the three-quarters of the expense has al- is already solid for for this year. We know that because again, it's an October through September timeframe. We always estimate the final quarter of the calendar year based on what has happened actual and a a feel based on prior year experience, what what the potential increase would be. So as as Neil mentioned, there's a lack of one-quarter's worth of expense that's not happening this year. So that's, that's what's driving out the uh the the savings related to these lines.
Okay. Thank you very much for clarifying. Appreciate it. No other questions for me.
Thank you. Councilwoman Daniels, any questions?
Yeah, are are there any items that could not be backfilled with CDBG funds?
I don't understand the question.
So, the items that the money's being transferred out of, they're pretty close budget-wise, right? So let's say we didn't meet the budget goals, are those items, can they be paid for through CDBG funds?
I don't know, but I don't think so. I mean, but CDBG has limits to what you can do. For example, you can't use it for general governmental operations and things like that, but specifically, you'd have to drill down on exactly what the expenditures are for to make that analysis.
Yeah, so that's what I'm asking you, are these, would these be permissible expenditures? Because we haven't allocated 23, 24, and 25.
Yeah, that, to me, is a completely different issue, which, a budget that has to come down to council for the past money into programming money, and for the CDBG home and ESG funds, those budgets have to come down to council for approval, which should include, as they typically do, some additional funds out of programming money. That money is those prior-year monies that weren't spent, that's what the source of that is. And when the budget's put together is when the analysis of what can and cannot be spent on. So I can't kind of do it off the cuff, I don't know if anyone can, sitting here about an item for custodial work, or an item for a training program. I could imagine a way to make a training program fit, but that is not what the administration proposed as their source of funding. And it's not included in the documents that went to the annual program, annual plan that comes down to council for where the money's going to be used for CDBG, that, they try to stick to the parameters of that plan.
I need the explanation. What's, but my, what this is looking like is that we haven't made those allocations, we have refused to be transparent about the CDBG money, and now we're allocating money from line items that look pretty precarious, and then we're going to suddenly going to get the CDBG bill that kind of backfills these, some of these expenditures. So we're not really being transparent, or having honest conversations about what we do, and don't want to fund with CDBG, and all of that stuff, like, I think, so that's basically, I'm just trying to figure out, like, how much of this will we expect to come down, to be, already be removed from the CDBG grants that we should have allocated already, as an emergency, because we need to catch up. That's all. I think that's it for me.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments regarding Schedule or Exhibit A? Saying no, we can move on to Exhibit B, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice President Green. Exhibit B relates to the footnote C, which is described there, and this dovetails back to Resolution 30 of 2025, related to the buoy installation project for the Dock Street Dam. So it's, the fund that's being utilized here is the state grants fund, because that way it can be utilized from the accounting side as a tracking, it's a project. And it would be funded by potentially this involved reimbursement agreement with the Commonwealth, PennDOT specifically. It's an estimated figure for the installation of the concrete buoys into the river base. And it's grant-like, if you will, even though it really is properly stated as a reimbursement agreement, so that the funds can be outlaid and then submitted to PennDOT for reimbursement back to the city. But the state grants fund, which is not, of course, the general fund, but it's an ideal place to account for this, because we do account for projects, and this is project budget-based, based on currently the $2 million. So that's the content of this particular budget. I'll call it a project budget, it's not, it's not part of our budget ordinance that you, that was passed, but it's, nonetheless, it's project budget for this particular project.
Thank you very much, I don't have any questions. I'm going to start to my right this time with Councilwoman Daniels, any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Davis, any questions?
No questions at this time.
Thank you, President Bowers, any questions?
No, thank you, I don't have any questions.
Excuse me, President Hill, Councilwoman Ross, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
Councilmember Rodriguez, any questions?
No questions on Exhibit B, thank you.
Thank you, and Councilman Jones, any questions?
I guess I'll break it, no questions.
Thank you very much. Thank you both for your presentation and for the information tonight. I am going to ask that this move to our next legislative agenda.
Thank you.
And that concludes the work for the Budget and Finance Committee, thank you.
Thank you. We will now move forward with our meeting agenda with the Public Safety Committee. I will defer to our Public Safety Committee Chair, Councilman Jones, to lead discussion.
Thank you, I see codes here. Once the money man leaves.
I thought you forgot about it.
No, I did, sir. Can you read Bill 6 of 2025, please, into the record?
Bill 6 of 2025, an ordinance amending Chapter 8-103 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Harrisburg, known as the Electrical Code, to implement fees for certain electrical inspections performed by the city.
Thank you. You two mind introducing yourselves, and Mr. Montgomery, please give a quick overview of Bill 6.
Okay. Good evening, City Council, Anne Montgomery, Harrisburg City Administrator.
Hi, Michael Yuravich, Harrisburg City Codes Officer.
All right.
So last year, a new position passed for the city to have their own residential electrical inspector, which will be Mick Yuravich here. So what we're presenting tonight are the fees for those inspections.
Okay, so I'll just ask a couple of questions.
Okay.
Just for the public viewing, so they can understand what this is, I think it was, what, 8 subsection, I mean, Chapter 8, Subsection 103 of that ordinance. So my question would be, would this help reduce the cost for homeowners, and if so, I don't know if you can say by how much, but you think this would help actually lower the cost for our homeowners in these dwellings because of usually using that third party and the expense that they would incur going that way?
Yeah, so we looked in local areas and third-party inspectors and what they were charging. So it's a fair fee that we're presenting to you, and it is a little bit lower than what third parties were charging before.
And can you share the fees, just a couple of them, like for a single family, or?
If you want to, yeah.
You know?
So we have a couple examples here.
And I'm just saying, it's because the public can't see it, just give you a couple of numbers, like a 200 amp, what that would cost for the installation?
Okay, yeah, so we have one, single family for 200 amp service is $140. We're going to be charging 100.
So there's a saving.
So there is a savings, yes. This is all for residential. For, let's see, two-family dwelling, which we would be doing inspections for that, again, it's $100, but they're charging 180 for the two-family.
More savings.
Yeah, more savings. Do you want me to keep going?
No, I just wanted to, just, you know, so the public could kind of hear, because it had me confused for a little bit, right? I just had to make sure that what I was looking at and understanding when we were talking about the third party. And sometimes, there was still some barriers for those third parties to even come in and do some of that work. So I think this kind of makes sense to keep, I mean, to actually use in-house and do that, so it's just less tape to cut through for them to go out and do an inspection.
The other big part of this is the safety of it. Instead of having third party come in and inspect, which they get to know people, and there's stories that have been told, but we'll have a better handle of what's being done. There has been fires that have started from electrical installations that weren't done properly. So it's about the safety also.
And so if this is passed, it will be implemented, actually, act of July 1st of 2025?
July 1st is when we're going to be starting the inspections, yes.
All right, no further, oh, it's me. I don't have any further questions, so I'll start to my immediate right with Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Chair Jones, thank you, Director Montgomery, thank you both for joining us. I understand this in totality, I hope it just translates well for the residents watching at home, but I have no questions pertaining to this, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Ross.
Thank you so much, Councilman Jones. And good evening to you both, thank you for being here this evening to give us more information. I think for the residents, I was wondering if either one of you could give them more information on why they would need this service, when they would call the city for this service, just some logistics on it, so they would understand why we're passing this, or why we would pass this.
So whenever anybody runs new electrical wires, they have to have somebody come in and inspect it, and that's always was done by a third party in the past. But now, we would like to have the oversight of that, and I think that'll keep the city safer, the residents safer, by us doing our own inspection of the residential.
Sure, so they know who you are, that'd be great, too.
Yeah, hi. So what's happening is, we're finding a lot of buildings that have completely been rewired, and they already have their pass sticker from the inspection, and it's not finished yet. So it's causing a lot of problems. Also, after an inspection's done, we're supposed to be notified from the inspector that it's done, we don't know who it is. So when we get there, we see the sticker, we don't know if someone's passing out stickers, we don't know. We also found a few inspectors that actually aren't state certified, so it's just kind of a mess out there. And we really, you know, with the fire situation, it's a good idea.
Yeah, no, I agree. I just wanted to make sure, like, all residents knew, like, it was, you know, the biggest thing was for, like, new installations, for inspections, or you also, are you inspecting places that are on a list that you have, or this is just for new ones, just?
It'll be, so, a lot of times, people won't have an inspection sticker, or you just bought a new house, it has no inspection sticker. The protocol would be, you have to hire an electrician to look at it, and then he has to hire a third party. So that's saving cost, too. You could actually, if you're a new homeowner, come down, apply for what we have as the safety inspection, and we'll do the inspection. So there's a bunch of different scenarios where it's going to be safer and probably save the people some money.
No, thank you for the explanation, just so residents know what this service would be, when they would need it. I think that clarification helps, just so people don't think maybe you're also the city electrician to, like, come put up lights, or, you know what I mean? Because there's a difference, you're inspecting to make sure it's safe, and if they want to put up lights or need something fixed, that's an electrician call.
And I'd imagine if you hired an electrician, he's probably going to find something wrong to fix.
Yeah, of course, it's like taking your car to a dealership.
Absolutely.
So, no, thank you for that clarification. You gave me a little bit more, too, because I didn't know you could come down to if you felt like you needed an inspection. I thought it was just to, just if I would be putting in new wiring.
That happens a lot, people get a new house and be like, they're not, you know, they want...
Just want to make sure, so that's good, especially, yeah, so thank you.
So they would be getting the safety inspection.
The safety inspection, okay. I did not know that, so that was something you brought up to me. So thank you for that enlightenment, and that's it for me.
Thank you. President Hill?
Thank you, I don't have any questions.
Vice President Green?
Thank you very much, I don't have any questions.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Davis?
Thank you, you pretty much clarified everything for me. This is for new electrical installations, or new buildings, new houses, not your regular inspections that you go around the city every six years for multi-units, my guess.
Yeah, it doesn't have to do with the rental registration or rental inspections.
Okay.
Now, we may find something, that there was a new installation where they never got any inspection, so then we would call that out, and then they'd have to...
Okay, okay. Well, thank you, thank you for being here this evening.
Councilwoman Daniels?
No questions, thank you.
All right, so I have another question. So we talked about residential, how does this apply when it comes to commercial?
So commercial will still be done by a third party.
Okay, so they still got to foot the bill?
Yeah.
All right, you got something?
Well, we may look at that later, to see if we do the commercial, but first, we'd like to implement the residential.
Yeah, I think it would be beneficial to look at that, too, to kind of, you know, I don't know, kind of give them a break as well. I mean, again, without overexerting the Codes Department and its officers, you know, I know that there may be a limit there as well. And so my other question, too, with some of these properties that, this goes into effect July 1st, so at that point, you're starting on, pretty much, on a new sheet of paper. Is there a backlog that you still need to address?
It would be anything moving forward, any new applications for electrical.
All right, thank you. If there's no more questions or comments, anyone? Without seeing any, thank you for showing up tonight.
Thank you, City Council.
Yep, yep, and I would ask that, I mean, Bill 6 of 2025 be moved to the next legislative session, and I would ask my colleagues to support this bill.
I would just like to remind, Councilman Jones, remember, we will be running...
Oh, my goodness.
We will be running an amended version, it just adds a fee that was left off, so that will come before you on the legislative session.
I apologize, yes.
Thank you. Our final committee business this evening lies with the Public Works Committee. I will defer to our Public Works Committee Chair, Councilman Rodriguez, to lead discussion.
Thank you, Madam President. All right, starting Public Works Committee, we will discuss a multitude of bills and 1, 2, 3, 4 resolutions. We will begin with Bill 7 of 2025. Mr. Parker, would you mind reading Bill 7 of 2025 into the record?
Certainly. Bill 7 of 2025, an ordinance amending Chapter 3-135 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Harrisburg, regarding the removal and impounding of motor vehicles to codify and otherwise conform the city process for the selection and engagement of salvor and towing operations.
All right, thank you for that, and I see we have Director West here today, representing Public Works. Director West, would you like to give a brief overhaul of Bill 7 of 2025?
Yes. Okay. It's more of a lawyer thing.
Okay.
But we have also, DC Young is up, and I think he was on line there, from the police view, because towing covers two things, the Public Works needs and the police needs.
Deputy Commissioner, are you with us?
I am, sir, how are you this morning? And thank you for having me. I'm sorry that I'm doing this virtually. I'm trying to wrap up some training down here in Philadelphia before I return back next week.
Oh, in Philly, I thought you was in Tokyo, you said good morning.
It's all about the same.
Yes, sir. Did you, would you like to give a brief overhaul of Bill 7 for everyone?
Well, before we start, I would just say, the city is in litigation, this has sort of been publicly advertised, and based on a longstanding practice, the city determined long ago that the bidding process didn't work in the ordinance. So there hasn't been a bid under the ordinance since 2006. But litigation prompted the city to go ahead and make the proposed modifications presented to council. I think DC Young and Director West can both speak to what we actually use towing for in the city, and this is to seriously identify how we get towing companies. The practice has been informal for a very long time, and this basically moves the informality into an ordinance, and replaces what exists today. and replaces what exists today. So, with that, they, if you want to talk about actual towing, it, it doesn't really change what's happening, it just, it conforms the ordinance to the practice.
Absolutely, uh, Director West, would you like to briefly touch on Bill seven?
Yes, so, the reason why I asked for to meet about, uh, Bill seven was, we had two different entities, two different towing services, you know, to achieve our task. And because of that, we wanted a, uh, one-stop shop, we wanted a company that could help us in all aspects of our areas of our, our equipment and our auto vehicles as well. And, and we did, um, some searching and we, and, and we didn't have to do, to do too much searching because there was a company that moved into the city, two companies actually that moved into the city, that we, I went to meet and had conversation and asked them to, um, uh, distribute their information for us, and they were compatible to, I know that I was looking for on the Public Works end for the auto and heavy equipment aspect.
And did these were, uh, CNC and Cameron Street Towing?
That's correct.
Okay, and then they can meet all the needs as far as commercial and your regular standard class size vehicles?
That's correct.
And Don's, they kind of struggled with that because sometimes they wouldn't even come, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, okay, and then, uh, Solicitor Grover, you said the previous contract that wasn't, two thousand and six, I believe?
The last time there was a, the ordinance called, the, the, the ordinance called for a bidding process, but it wasn't really a bid because the ordinance set the price, right? So, it, it doesn't change based on who the vendor is. Um, and it was adopted in nineteen ninety, but the last time an actual three-year bid was issued was two thousand and six. That contract then got extended several times, the last time expired, I think it's October thirty-first of twenty twelve. So, and, and since then, it's basically been who the, uh, Police Bureau and the mayor basically designate. Um, and there's actually been multiple vendors over the years, not just Don's, although they were the primary one. There's one that we use separately, the police use for storage of cars for long-term that have to be held for evidence. No, it's, I think it's Riverside, um, and then we were using H and S for several other items, but, but, but it had been primarily, uh, Don's towing. Um, but there were limits to the service that was being provided, it's been frankly a long-term discussion, and there's more changes that need to come to the ordinance, but frankly, this change comes simply because of what was filed against the city in the court, um, which resulted in a temporary injunction, which has now been lifted. Uh, and it basically conforms the actual ordinance to the actual practice of the mayor designating vendors who are eligible. And then, if you're eligible, then you can tow, so Mr., the, the, Don's towing's still on the list, it's just, there's others on the list now.
Absolutely, and then the ordinance allows up to two companies, correct?
It calls for two, but it doesn't technically limit it to two, right? So, so, but you have to be a licensed salvoor through PENDA, you have to be a certified salvoor, you know, there's limits to what, you, you can't just go out and do it. And the ordinance does punish those that are not certified, not authorized, to come into the city and start taking cars. So, um, you know, we have dove into this quite a bit because there's actually two separate lawsuits over the past couple of years related to towing services. And so we've been on the litigation side for quite a while.
All right, and then, um, if I'm not mistaken, Director West, uh, we were guaranteed at least a twenty-minute response time max from both entities?
That's at the latest.
That's at the latest, so that's great, CNC Towing and Cameron Street Towing. CNC and Cameron Street are the two entities. All right, um, we have caught up, uh, in, in our monthly meeting, so I'm aware of the resolutions, but I'll open it up to council to see if they have any questions, starting with my far right, I'll open it up to Councilwoman Daniels.
No, no questions, thank you.
All right, uh, Councilwoman Davis.
No questions at this time.
All right, Madam Vice President.
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Madam President.
No questions, thank you.
Absolutely, Councilwoman Ross.
Thank you very much, good evening, thank you for being here, Director West.
Thank you.
Um, just a concern from a few residents with, um, towing at the aspect and some towing companies we have used. Um, although, when an individual's car gets towed, it could be at their own fault, but sometimes it could not be, you know, there's always some exceptions to reasons why cars get towed. But a few residents had issues with kind of not being able, uh, felt like their rights were being kind of taken away from them as their car was being towed, or they couldn't get it back, or get their keys back, or there were just certain issues going on with the towing companies of choice that were towing their vehicles. So, in this ordinance, or, or in any ordinances, because this could be new for me, in this instance, are there ever any guidelines, um, that are laid out for, um, how people are treated when their car is towed, like any, uh, requirements or expectations that are outlined so they know what to expect, I guess, in a, in a certain way in this ordinance?
It is not in the ordinance, there is a more recent code of conduct that's been proposed through the Bureau of Police for this.
Okay.
For how a tow operator must operate.
Okay.
Um, and most of our cars and towing actually are police-related, right? That's the vast majority of them, um, and so that is there, it's not, it's not conditioned into an ordinance. I will note again, there's more modernization has to come to this ordinance.
Okay.
And we only address this, the prices set were, were set in nineteen ninety, right? There, there's been a little bit of inflation since nineteen ninety.
A lot.
Right?
A lot.
Right, and so, um, but the ordinance mandates those prices.
And it provides a, uh, it provides relief for citizens to go to a district justice, they've been overcharged.
Um, you know, we've gotten candid testimony and of course litigation that for ten years, overcharging was happening.
Yeah.
Uh, and, um, the, you know, so we have been at this for a little bit. Um, but again, more modernization to come. I don't know that there's anyone at the end of the day that's happy with a tow company when their car is towed when they didn't request it, right?
No, true, but, other things can come out during that period, like you do have to hold yourself accountable. And sometimes, like I said, sometimes it's not you, I mean, I've had, I've even had tickets placed on my car with our sticker from the city saying, hey, I'm allowed to park here and I still get a ticket. So, you, you, so you know, sometimes things happen that aren't to your fault, and sometimes they do and you have to hold yourself accountable, but we all have to be treated human in the same sense, so that's what I wanted to kind of make sure there were some human rights that are going to be laid out.
Sometimes the city parking enforcement puts a ticket on a city car, right? They're still basically finding ourselves, right?
Of course.
Right, so, so stuff does happen in, you know, imperfect world.
It does, so, okay, so there's more to come.
There'll be more to come.
Where we can address other code of conducts, or, okay, thank you, that was it for me, who am I, who had, thank you. I keep wanting to look down here, I'm so sorry.
Thank you, Councilwoman, uh, Councilman Jones.
Yeah, yeah, uh, same, same concerns, um, hopefully that we have, um, you know, some, I, I know this is not limited to two tow companies, and one in specific is Cameron Street Towing. And, um, there were some incidents with residents that had their vehicles towed not even a, a half a mile from where Cameron Street's towing is, and the, and the price was almost two hundred and sixty dollars, and they were there within five minutes to get their vehicle, then weren't allowed to go into the vehicle. And if we look at the relationship we had with Don's for fifty thousand years, um, it was also like, um, I think you had to pay a, a release, come to the police station and pay the city five dollars for a release form and then go back over there.
And that's, and it is laid out in the ordinance, and it is pretty cumbersome, it's pretty old school. But frankly, it's only supposed to be something like all-in for a normal, I took your car because it was illegally parked or blocking something. Uh, it's a thirty-five dollar total fee plus thirty-five dollars a day storage plus ten dollars to the city. So, overcharge has been happening a lot, and that needs, but it's also, they're based on nineteen ninety numbers. So, I, I surmise but don't know, the cost of the tow truck, it's gasoline to tow a car, is more than our cost to get it back if you stick with nineteen ninety numbers, that's why the system wasn't working at all, right? You can't get anyone to do it for that amount of money.
Yeah, and I get the, the inflation, and I get costs, costs have risen over the time too, but there is such thing as, as a fairness too, because they, usually a tow co, tow, tow company outside of a police incident. Okay.
But, but I said, that's what's to come, right? The discussion with council and the mayor's office of, and the Police Bureau and Mr. West is what is the fair price and what is the formula going forward, that's the deliberation that has to come. And I suspect many people will want to weigh in on that discussion.
Absolutely.
Yes, which, which is part why I probably never has not been down here in years, right? Because it's going to be a very lively discussion.
Well, I just, I just think long as that, um, you know, it's fair and we have to take, even though, um, the costs are rising, poverty still exists in the City of Harrisburg, so we want to make sure that we're not price gouging and, 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 and then, you know, even just getting credentials out of people's vehicles, there's a lot of things that happens that these, these, uh, tow yards that, that, that affect residents, you know, and again, I think this is a warranted discussion and hopefully we can come to some type of, you know, common ground here where, you know, it's, it's, uh, you know, uh, equitable, so to speak, to, to, to all stakeholders. So, again, just looking at that, I, I'm eager to have that discussion because, um, as Councilwoman Ross said, you know, I've have gotten, um, complaints and there's nothing that I could do for them at, at that particular time, but now that this is on the table, I think this is a warranted discussion, so that's all I have.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman Jones, and, uh, D.C. Young, could you briefly touch on how this may alleviate pressure um, from Officer Wells and kind of assist him in what he does on a daily basis?
Certainly, um, so Officer Wells is our abandoned vehicle officer, as you're aware. Uh, what he does is he'll run around and he finds cars that are either the inspection sticker's expired, the registration's out, there's no insurance, or they're sitting on a city street, uh, basically, uh, inoperable, needing repairs, things like that. So what he does is he'll go out and, uh, he follows what the vehicle code tells him. And, uh, and then, uh, through that process, he may come up with about six, seven, eight cars that he needs towed, our prior vendor had trouble keeping up with that. Uh, he's the only one that he can, he can contact the, the towing vendor directly and then make those arrangements because he has such a bulk of cars to tow at one shot. Um, we were, prior, probably the last two years, what we had done was start bringing in Cameron Street Towing, uh, in order to, to assist with, uh, with Don's towing. Uh, in order to keep up with that load of cars. So, um, as far as the abandoned vehicle side of that goes, uh, that's, that's Justin toes, or Officer Wells toes the, the most amount of cars for the police department, but there are other reasons why we would tow cars as well.
So this can ideally like streamline that service and, and assist resident services a bit expeditiously, a bit more quicker?
It would, so it, it's basically, right, it would streamline that services, um, and then it would, uh, it would, correct. Yes, and then I'll get back to what, uh, we, we talked about, when we started this process a couple of years ago, we had talked about a code of conduct, so, um, we've been at this for about three years now trying to get, um, because that was one of my biggest complaints that I was getting, when somebody come down and pick up their, their car, they were getting screened out by a towing vendor. And, uh, and that's what I'm, I mean, my biggest problem was that, that I had to, uh, the city residents weren't getting treated, and the towing vendor was the face of the city at the time that was going on.
Awesome, thank you for that.
If I may, uh, Councilman, uh, wherever he is, uh, with the Public Works side, when we have our trash trucks out in these alleys, and these vehicles are in the alleys, and we get halfway through the alley and we're stuck, and we call the towing company, um, then, and we call Officer Wells, whoever it may be, and we get no response, I have to have that truck backed all the way out of the alley, which is very unsafe, uh, as, as well as when we're on our paving projects and we place our no parking signs, forty-eight hours post, that's what we supposed to do, and that's what we do, but when we get there to pave that morning, vehicles are sitting there, and if we can't get them moved, that stops the entire operation, which we have to call the asphalt company because now we've sent our team to go pick up asphalt. You can't waste eighty tons of asphalt trying to get a car moved, because that's a lot of money, that's the cost of the city, because once they put it on the truck, we're responsible for it.
Yeah.
So, it, it, it has happened a numerous amount of time for us to accomplish what we need to accomplish, so, uh, I look to say that we need someone that can access us in a timely manner so we can effectively and efficiently complete our task that needs to be done for what we do on a daily basis.
Absolutely, and Councilman Jones had a very good point, working together in unison to come up with the best conclusion. Uh, earlier in our meeting, you and Mr. Jackson had a very good sentiment and remark, and I, I told you I would definitely repeat it, and counsel for the whole body.
Yes.
And, um, so just, so council knows, Director West and Mr. Jackson wanted to personally say, um, whatever the issues may have been in the past, they like to spearhead whatever they need to, to be the liaison between council and the administration, so we can collaboratively work together, and I promised them I'd let it be known here on the record. Um, I've heard many people in council say they feel the same way, so maybe it just may be mixed emotions or things got lost in translation, but hopefully moving forward from this day forward, we all could work collaboratively, put differences aside and just do what's, you know, right for the city, and, um, I'm pretty sure council feels the same way. This, this is not a call for rubber stamping or a call to kiss any rear end in that matter of respect, but this is a call just to keep that accountability going, but ask for a great relationship moving forward, and that's with our new business manager, directors, chief, whomever. Um, I just have pie in the sky hopes and dreams for that, and I promised you today at Public Works that I would mention that.
Thank you, that's very much appreciated.
Yes, sir, um, so with that being said, I'll move to have Bill seven of twenty twenty-five added to our next legislative session. And moving right along forward, Resolution thirty-six of twenty twenty-five. Mr. Parker, may please read Resolution thirty-six of twenty twenty-five into the record.
Resolution thirty-six of twenty twenty-five. A resolution approving the disposal of certain personal property owned by the City of Harrisburg which have exhausted their useful life for city operations.
Thank you for that, and, uh, I had took the liberty to make sure council had not only the disposition list of the vehicles, but also the description of the items that they were looking forward to getting rid of, um, just because I know this came up in many conversations throughout the years, and I wanted to make sure we could all get eyes on it, absolutely, all right? And Chief, um, Director West, Chief, would you like to give an overhaul of Resolution thirty-six of twenty-five, please?
Dave and I'll tag team this one, what, what a, what a great, what a great guy to work with, I think we're just pretty good together. Uh, so I will talk on the, uh, the stuff that's on the skids, uh, or some of the vehicles that, that the Director West has. I will talk on the final page under Exhibit B. You guys have that, hopefully? Which is, so we're kind of starting at the back and working forward, uh, which is a nineteen ninety-four Raven trailer, uh, actually two of those, uh, they were twins, a nineteen ninety-seven Worthington, uh, trailer, a two thousand and nine Chevy thirty-five hundred truck with a Meyer snowplow, a two thousand and three Chevy Suburban, and a two thousand and four Chevy Tahoe. So as you can see, uh, they are fairly old vehicles, they have, uh, lived well past, uh, well past their useful life for the Fire Bureau from an efficiency and effectiveness standpoint, so we are moving to dispose of those. Um, and all those vehicles have been.
Could you give those to us one more time, Chief, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, did I go too?
The vehicles that you just mentioned?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, nineteen ninety-four Raven trailer. Nineteen ninety-four Raven trailer.
So, I'm not seeing the Raven trailer.
So that would be, um, that is on an Exhibit B.
Exhibit B.
Got you, got you.
Yep. You good?
Yep.
Uh, the nineteen ninety-seven Worthington, uh, snowmobile trailer, two thousand and nine Chevy thirty-five hundred truck with a Meyer snowplow, two thousand and three Chevy Suburban, and a two thousand and four Chevy Tahoe.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, and I, I have no questions, um, with this, I had spoke about, um, this specific resolution with Public Works a bit earlier, so I'll open it up for questions, um, Director West, did you want to add anything up, anything to that before we pass it around?
No, no, not on the part of, of what the chief just discussed.
All right, thank you, um, Councilman Jones?
Um, no questions.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ross.
Um, good evening, uh, Director Interline, no questions for me.
Thank you, Madam President.
Good evening again, I don't have any questions, thank you.
Absolutely, Madam Vice President.
Thank you, I don't have any questions for you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Davis.
Thank you, uh, good evening, Chief Interline and Director West, I don't have any questions, thank you.
Right, and Councilwoman Daniels?
No questions, thank you.
All right, thank you, um, did you have anything you wanted to add pertaining to Resolution thirty-six? Either one of you gentlemen?
I don't, we don't, we don't want to keep you here too long.
All right.
We just want on the record that, um, the, uh, last part of this resolution, it was about the equipment that we have been, uh, talking about for the past couple of years, that, yes.
Okay, this one right here.
Yes, this, this one right here.
Yep.
That we, um, we finally. That we we finally were able to put together and place on skids and label to remove all of the equipment that we no longer used because due to the authorizations of past administration, this administration and past and present council that we were able to purchase one particular type of truck so we can have one particular type of equipment, which would be more, which is more efficient for our operation, that we're able to get rid of this stuff and get and be able to get funding back at a very higher rate currently than we would have in the past. So the the needs for older equipment, the ask is much more now because people that are using equipment currently, because of the prices of equipment are so high, they're buying used equipment. And we can sell this these 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 materials at a very high price.
Yes, Councilman Jones?
Yeah, you're talking about tools or the vehicles and the tools?
Vehicles and tools.
Okay. Yeah. So is there is there a way that, you know, some of the public can purchase some of these things at a low?
It'll all on Penn bid, I believe, is where it's all gonna go. It's not it's not being trashed, it's putting out for public auction.
Okay.
Which is the obligation if it's if it's not trash.
Not so commercial, right?
No, no, it's gonna go out on Penn bid, I think, for auction.
Gov, I think it's Gov deals.
Oh, Gov deals.
Gov deals, yeah.
Okay. So that would be the only place that it'd be. So I mean, you know, because some people might not even go there. You know, so when it goes there, you know, I just would like the notification so I can, you know, tell some people to look.
And yeah, it's not out there with a price, so it's an auction. And like the stuff in the fire bureau, I think we started a hundred dollars. So it it's easily accessible for nearly anybody.
All right. That's good. Thank you.
Awesome. All right. Did anyone else on council have anything else to add pertaining to Resolution Thirty-Six of twenty twenty-five? All right. Hearing nothing.
Before before we do that, I just want to put on the record that this resolution also does include four thousand one hundred and eight solar panels and four central inverters that are supposed to be disposed of that are now sitting on Susquehanna Township property. We were supposed to get rid of them April thirtieth. That is a part of this resolution as well.
Those were the solar panels pulled from, okay, got you. I understand. All right. Madam President, I move to have Resolution Thirty-Six of twenty twenty-five added to our next legislative session. And with that being said, moving right along to Resolution Thirty-Eight of twenty twenty-five. Mr. Parker, can you please read Resolution Thirty-Eight of twenty twenty-five into the record?
Resolution Thirty-Eight of twenty twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a renewed easement agreement with Harrisburg Cooling LLC for the purpose of operating and maintaining a chilled water cooler system under and through certain public rights of way within the city.
All right. Thank you for that. I see we have Mr. Joel, our engineer. Whenever you guys get comfortable, you can introduce our guest.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Sean Feebig. I'm the plant manager for Harrisburg Cooling LLC.
Awesome. Welcome.
Thank you.
And for our business manager, if you can introduce yourself for the record, please?
Hi, Sam Tsikovsky, interim business administrator. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tsikovsky. All right. If you wanted to give an overhaul of Resolution Thirty-Eight of twenty twenty-five, Mr. Joel, yeah?
So this resolution is kind of an extension of a previous agreement that the city and Harrisburg Cooling entered into in two thousand and twelve. And it was for a ten-year term and it expired in two thousand and twenty-two and we are looking to renew that easement agreement. And the easement agreement is for Harrisburg Cooling Central Chiller Plant located on North Second Street. It allows their cooling lines to pass through the cities right away to service their clients.
And when you say cooling lines, could you expand on that just for a brief second?
Yes, we we operate a district chill water system, so we deliver cooling water for comfort cooling of of spaces. Our customers reside along the west side of South Second Street. The physical plant is located at one oh one South Second Street.
Awesome. All right. Would you gentlemen like to add anything to that before I pass it around to council?
So I guess part of the the new agreement was to kind of verify the existing easement. And the administration had asked me to take a look at the 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 proposed easement. And it was, in my opinion, that the easement was adequate for for the needs and I recommended to the administration to proceed with the renewal.
Awesome. And then either one of you gentlemen, what benefit would this play into for our residents in the city?
Well, we, one of our primary customers is UPMC Medical Center, so we we serve them. They're they're, we're a vital part of their utilities, as well as Dolphin County, the entire Dolphin County complex.
So this is really residential?
It is not. It's commercial.
Okay. Awesome. All right. I'll be opening it up to my colleagues on council, starting to my far right with Councilwoman Daniels. Councilwoman Daniels?
No question.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Davis? Madam Vice President?
Thank you. I don't have any questions at the moment.
Thank you, Madam President.
Good evening. I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rawls.
Good evening to you all. I don't have any questions.
Thank you, Councilman Jones.
No questions.
All right. Would you gentlemen like to add anything to it before we conclude this resolution? All right. Madam President, I move to have Resolution Thirty-Eight of twenty twenty-five added to our next legislative session. Thank you all for joining us. And and moving right along with Committee Business, Resolution Thirty-Nine of twenty twenty-five. Mr. Parker, can you please read Resolution Thirty-Nine of twenty twenty-five into the record?
Resolution Thirty-Nine of twenty twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Kimley Horn and Associates Incorporated for the purpose of providing engineering and design services for multimodal improvements along Walnut Street.
All right. Thank you for that. Thank you for joining us. If you'd like to introduce yourself, speak clearly into the mic for those watching at home, please.
My name is Stephen McGinnley. I'm a project manager with Kimley Horn and Associates.
All right. Mr. McGinnley, will you be giving an overhaul of Resolution Thirty-Nine for us? Or Mr. Joel? Okay, thank you.
This resolution is kind of an extension of our current Chestnut Street project. Originally, they were combined as the east-west connection. When funding for construction came through, it was not enough to do both segments. So the the project was split. The Chestnut Street has been bid and awarded and is going to be, start construction later this month. Walnut Street, we were able to secure a Tazza grant from the state last year. And that kind of allowed us to to move forward with consultant selection for the Walnut Street portion, which is safety improvements from Front Street to Fourth Street along Walnut Street. And we put out, the city put out a request for proposal for this final design work and construction support. Kimley Horn was ultimately selected out of three proposals. And yeah, their their proposal really kind of spoke to us. They had previously done the initial design on on Walnut Street before it was separated into two. And I guess I should also, it might be confusing that they already did the design and now it's going off for a bit again. As part of the Tazza grant, it adds some more stringent environmental concerns. So the project kind of has to almost be scaled back a little bit and looked at from a new perspective to satisfy those environmental concerns.
And what kind of multimodal improvements will take place at that time?
Some of the multimodal improvements that are taking place is we're adding a bike lane from Front Street all the way up to Fourth Street. And with that, you would have to upgrade the ADA curb ramps and and crossings there and also the traffic signals because the bikes will be going the opposite direction of the traffic. So we'll have to modify some of the traffic signals to accommodate that. And the last improvement is a raised intersection at Second Street and Walnut Street for entrance for folks coming off of eighty-three, they have to kind of slow down as they enter Second Street in the central business district.
Okay, awesome. Did either of you gentlemen have anything to add?
I don't know.
All right. I'll open it up to my colleagues on council, starting with Councilman Jones.
Can you come back to me?
Yes, sir.
I'm still loading here. Never mind. Yeah, just give me, just come in.
Yep. Councilwoman Rawls.
Thank you. You gave a little bit of information I was gonna ask. And good evening to you both. If I haven't said it, I'm sorry. Was so quick with the last resolution you came up. But exactly which Walnut Street, because there's various ones. So thank you. What would the timeline on this project be?
As soon as notice to proceed would be given, I'd imagine design would be finished by the end of this year and construction then the following year.
And then how long would it take after construction begin? Just so residents know, like, you know, coming up, how long it could be?
I think it should be about one one construction season.
Okay. In that, what is a construction season?
About a one year, about about a year.
A year, okay. I'm sorry. I know what a school year runs. I don't know if construction season. Okay, thank you. That's it. I just wanted to make sure residents can think ahead and have a timeline on what this may look like. Thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rawls. Madam President?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Thank you. I don't have any questions for you.
Councilwoman Davis?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. McGinnley and Mr. Joel. Okay, so I'm trying to understand this. Bike lane is going to be added. Is that on Walnut Street from, say, Front Street or Second Street up Walnut?
Yeah, it will be, it will start at Front Street and run up the right side of the roadway to Fourth Street.
Okay. On Walnut Street?
Yeah, it'll be similar. It has the green paint on Market Street, how you have the the green bike lanes. It'll look similar to that.
Okay. That area is so congested. I was trying to figure in my mind how that would work. Just with the cars, the parking, the traffic. So, but thank you for clarifying. And I don't have any other questions right now. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. And Councilwoman Daniels? Does she? Councilwoman Daniels?
No questions. Thank you.
All right. Councilman Jones?
Yeah. So sorry about the delay, because I got a thousand questions. So no. Would this any way interfere with Project Zero? I heard you talking about the syncing of the lights. Would this interfere or would it coincide?
It would coincide.
Okay.
Because that'll be our our next presentation. There'll actually be concurrent projects, so it's a it's an opportunity for for both projects to.
Got you.
To work with each other simultaneously.
That's all I have.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. Any other questions for my colleagues on council regarding this? Hearing none, I move to add Resolution Thirty-Nine of twenty twenty-five on the next legislative session. And that concludes that business for Resolution Thirty-Nine of twenty twenty-five. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving right forward, Mr. Parker, would you mind reading Resolution Forty of twenty twenty-five into the record, please?
Resolution Forty of twenty twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Trans Associates Engineering Consultants Incorporated for the purpose of providing transportation engineering services for traffic signal re-timing in the downtown area in furtherance of the city's Vision Zero action plan.
Thank you for that, sir. And joining us, would you mind introducing yourself? Speak directly into the mic for those watching at home, please?
Yes. Hi, thank you for having me here tonight. Nick Schaefer with Trans Associates Engineering.
Thank you. And Mr. Schaefer, would you or Mr. Joel like to give an overhaul of Resolution Forty for us, please?
Good evening. So this resolution is kind of an extension of the the Safe Streets For All Grant that the city was awarded last year. This is the next step forward. Per the grant requirements, we're to put this out for competitive bid, we received two requests for proposals. Trans Associates put an amazing proposal together. We have absolutely no reservations of recommending them. The project is twenty-five signalized intersections downtown and it's going to improve traffic signal timing, pedestrian timing upgrades. And it's really just to help congestion downtown where all those intersections kind of talk to each other and synced up. So they're all kind of working in unison.
Would you like to add anything to that?
No, just what Joel said.
Give to your expertise a bit?
Yeah, okay. My expertise? Yeah, I'm a registered professional engineer in Pennsylvania. I have twenty-two years of experience in transportation planning, traffic signal design and and traffic engineering. I am a the principal for transportation services in central PA and eastern PA for Trans Associates.
Thank you.
Sufficient, yeah.
All right. City's Vision Zero is really important to the comprehensive plan, so it's really, you know, it's great to see this moving forward. I just pray for the day where we can kind of get everything with new timing, new fixtures around the city. But I understand, you know, downtown is really pertinent to the city growing for the future, so I do understand that. And with that being said, I'd like to open it up to my colleagues on council, starting with Councilwoman Daniels. Any questions?
No questions, and I will actually be logging off now.
All right. Thank you for that. Councilwoman Davis?
No questions at this time.
All right. Madam Vice President?
Thank you very much. I don't have any questions.
Madam President?
Good evening. I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Councilwoman Rawls?
Good evening. I don't have any questions.
All right. Councilman Jones?
No, just move into the twenty-first century seems good. Thank you.
And I have nothing to add to that. Would either of you gentlemen like to add anything before we conclude?
I don't have anything else. Thank you.
All right. With that being said, I move to add Resolution Forty of twenty twenty-five to our next legislative session. And that concludes the work of the Public Works Committee for tonight. Thank you, Madam Vice, Madam President.
Thank you. We will now move forward with our meeting agenda with public comment. Just a few housekeeping notes before we begin. Please state your name and your address for the meeting record. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live within the city. You will have four minutes to share your comments. Mr. Parker will serve as our timekeeper. I will begin to my right. Is there anyone that would like to offer public comment? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone in the middle section. Seeing and hearing no one, anyone to my left.
Good evening. My name is Evelyn Hunt. I live in the eighteen-hundred block of State Street. When I saw the agenda for this evening and I saw Resolution Thirty-Nine twenty twenty-five, I got happy. I said, at last, they're gonna do something on Walnut Street in Allison Hill from the eighteen-hundred block to the end of Walnut Street. So people have to, won't have to walk in the streets because of lack of sidewalks. Downtown is important. Midtown is important, but we have a lot of people who live in Allison Hill. And we pay taxes there. We should be entitled to sidewalks also. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to offer public comment? Okay, seeing and hearing no one, I have two two things that I wanted to mention before we adjourn. First, I misspoke earlier regarding council's interest in learning more about the ARPA updates. The city clerk's office has been in communication on behalf of council with the mayor and her staff, including interim business administrator Sokowski since the end of March two thousand and twenty-five. Just to remind everyone, our intention was to host a policy work session on Tuesday, April twenty-ninth, on the topic of Bill Five of two thousand and twenty-three, spending related to ARPA and community investment. I just wanted to read a portion of this email. I will share these same comments on the meeting record during next week's meeting. I will share these same comments on the meeting record during next week's meeting, but I just wanted to note that there was communication. Um, as you are aware, Bill Five of two thousand and twenty-three appropriated the city's remaining American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds. Through the revenue replacement mechanism, the ordinance includes provisions for ongoing council engagement regarding the use of these funds, particularly updates on program development and spending tied to the priorities identified in the bill. To date, several of these priority areas have not been fully accounted for in the quarterly reports received. And this session is intended to help ensure shared understanding and alignment moving forward. For each spending priority listed in Bill Five of two thousand and twenty-three, council is seeking clarification on the following three points. Has a department head been tasked with overseeing this allocation? What plan has been developed or is currently being developed to achieve the goals tied to the allocation? And how much of the allocation has been spent to date? Mr. Skalkowski responded on April twenty-second of two thousand and twenty-three, or excuse me, two thousand and twenty-five and noted that, uh, the administration was currently working on three major projects at that time that involved multiple departments and required substantial time commitments. So they wouldn't be able to participate in the policy work session. But he noted at the conclusion of the email that the administration will be more than willing to agree to help schedule another opportunity to meet with the city council at a later date in two thousand and twenty-five. So I believe I would like to revisit that and hopefully we can schedule something. So I just wanted to correct my, um, misstatement from earlier. The other update I wanted to provide, um, was the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-five quarterly reports are available on the city's website, um, on e-codes under miscellaneous documents. So please feel free, um, to peruse those quarterly reports. Um, we've received the majority of, uh, bureaus and departments. Believe there are two outstanding. So I just wanted to note that for the public. Again, I will share these same comments, um, for the physical meeting, uh, record during the legislative session. It is eight PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We stand adjourned.